And I like that to have. All right, excellent. All right, good morning, everybody. We are here for special meeting. The county commissioners, February 28th, 11:00 a.m. And we have a few things on our agenda today. Do we have any? Well, I'm skipping ahead after the pledge of allegiance for the approval of the agenda. So first, I'll ask everyone to silence their cell phones, please, and join me for the pledge of allegiance in moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have four items of new business on the agenda today. Any changes or amendments to the agenda?
None, thank you.
All right.
I will make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nothing.
Bring on all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And move on to community informational items. Commissioner Marcelo?
Um, I don't have very much, just continuing to work on transit. This weekend is ski touring and also our boys' basketball team will host a regional match. They're the undefeated district champions for the Frontier League. So if you would like to come watch, they will have games Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Anything else?
Uh, nothing for me.
Uh, nothing. Well, I do actually, upcoming on Thursday, the CPW Wildlife, another community informational meeting will be occurring virtually and I think, oh, I can't, I think we have that online, but it should be on our planner also.
Yeah, it should be, I think.
Um, for, for zoom-in information. Um, all right, any commissioner clarifications?
None for me, thank you.
None for me. All right, great. We have public comments on items on the agenda. I'll ask if you have public comment in the room, please raise your hand and state your name and address, and also online, we'll look for you there as well, and we will start in the room. Go ahead.
My name is Alex Marsh of the Law Office, William Alex Marsh, here on behalf of Leadville ATV. As you know, the agenda today is the first reading of the proposed new ordinance regarding highway vehicle usage on county roads. The last meeting had appeared and I stressed that having spoken of many of the key players, some of which are here actually right now. There'd been a general sentiment that people weren't truly being engaged, perhaps somewhat avoided. Comment was made by Commissioner Mudd essentially calling me a liar, which she had seen, planning, speaking to various members of outfitters. And as we go into this first reading, which is then followed by public comment, during that public comment, I would encourage the board of county commissioners to think about what they're doing while they're interacting with the necessary players here. Are you talking, are you counting ancillary or superfluous or superficial discussions with White Mountain Tours or High Country Tours or Leadville ATV as talking with them about this, just so you can check the box and say, yeah, we talked to them and then go on about legislating for the sake of legislating? Or are you hearing what people have to say, trying to find out what actually the wants and needs are revolving around this OHV ordinance? Because one is hearing and one is listening. And anything that's not substantive contact, I think is disingenuous to call true negotiations or inquiry. I just think it's important that everyone consider that going into this. When I have public comment, that's very important. That's when a lot of this key information will come out, and that's where there's a lot of opportunity for everyone's needs to possibly be woven into a very nice ordinance that works for everyone.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room?
I just have, want to clarify, is there public comment after the reading?
There is not public comment after the reading. That comes, correct. That comes at the second reading is the open, opening of the public hearing.
But we do have a comment sheet online right now that you can comment.
After reading it, reading.
Oh, I'm gonna show it online. I'll show you how to get there.
Okay.
You can, and you can, I mean, so you can give, you can start bringing in for the comment right away from that.
Okay. Comment now. I just want to say, OHVs are not street legal, they're not saved. It's, um, once the social media gets going and everybody knows that Leadville and Lake County is a free-for-all, it, it becomes unenforceable with respect to safety. Um, I know in the past, people have said URA allows it and Silverton allows it, and URA has not allowed it for 20 years, and Silverton has just voted against it. Um, I talked to an OHV guide service down there in Silverton, and he said it's no issue at all to trailer our, um, OHVs out to the allowed parking area to have access to the areas that are allowed for the OHVs. So thank you.
Hey, any other public comment in the room?
I just kind of was curious, is it possible to know what the outlines are going to be for this special use permit before we put the ordinance in place?
Not before we put the ordinance in place. The moratorium is meant to work on a special use permit.
Okay.
And the ordinance refers to the special use permit. And that will be developed and then incorporated into the second iteration of the ordinance.
Okay, so we won't know what that looks like until the ordinance is in place?
Correct. Well, this ordinance, we considered, were read today and then in place the 21st. Do we set that 30-day notice?
It will be effective until April 9th, based on our schedule.
Making, making any consideration on the 21st, and then it's effective the number of days later.
Yeah, I'll, okay.
You'll go over the timeline.
But yeah, then after the ordinance is in place, that's when the outline for what this, or the criteria for the special use permit gets decided.
There's already a basic outline of a special event, or special use permit, and, and it'll continue to be a living document and a work in progress. And I would imagine that we're going to be putting it online in draft form very shortly.
Okay. The other thing was, is with the grooming. Are we gonna have to, like, say, if I was gonna go out and groom the trails with my equipment, I would have to work with Lake County Public Works to do that?
Commissioner Mudd, excuse me, please, but just as a form of word, we can have him introduce himself for the record so that anybody who listens later can know.
Oh, I'm Tim Premier from High Country Tours.
Thank you.
There's a line six here says, "Commercial operators shall not perform road maintenance without approval from Lake County Public Works."
Correct.
And so, is, would grooming fall into that category and what would that look like?
Um, I think we'll go, we can go through that when we hit the agenda item. That's enough. Public comment is not necessarily at the time for discussion, but written your questions down, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other public comment? Anything online? You don't see anyone indicating that they have public comment online yet? Right. Um, I think that concludes public comment. So we'll go into our items of new business. And first is the first reading of the ordinance 23. Gosh, it would be 01. Oh, it would be 01, because it's an ordinance, not a resolution.
Yeah.
Um, the ordinance addressing multipurpose use on county roads. So Anne Schneider from our, our director from our community planning and development department is here.
Um, Kayla, do you mind opening up the email? I, I put the ordinance, the.
And you want me to share the screen?
Mm-hmm, if you'll share that. And then I, after that, I just wanted to, so I can give you the title. And then.
Just right here, yeah?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, so it, it, title is very short. It's just ordinance 23-01 and ordinance addressing multipurpose use on county roads. Um, is the ordinance, it is online. And then if you don't mind navigating and sharing, um, online to CPD's webpage, or I can navigate.
Yeah. I can just go.
Yeah, just go to the. Um, because what we've done, just want to make sure that everybody knows it's online and in the room today how to access. So when you very first go to our opening page, um, please click here for Outfitter and Guide Comment. There is a comment form on here. That just goes through and talks about everything. This is, this is the whole outline. It shows today's the first reading, March 9th will be the publication in the Herald. The 21st will be the presentation to the board for adoption, and April 9th being the effective date. It talks about, um, what the scope of work is going to be during the moratorium period. Um, and it just provides everyone access on how to give comment back. So you can go, you can either email me or put public comment in here and submit it.
It's always not a character limit on the public comment, right?
Right.
So whatever, by whatever means, anyone would like to provide input on anything that's out there, but this just kind of outlines, yes.
Will the public comments be viewable by the public?
Um, so public comments will, will come in, into the office. We haven't talked about a shared platform yet for.
They usually get read into the record.
They'll be read into the record and they'll be part of the, the actual hearing. But I, um, they won't be housed on a, on like a, a shared drive, everyone's at this point.
Well, just, yeah, I'd be curious. We got the discussion amongst everyone and everybody knew what everybody was thinking.
So, um, and then going back to, absolutely. I mean, they can be put on a shared drive, yep. So on the news and notices over here, the OHV draft is on there. Um, so this is the, the copy of that. For anyone that wants to know how to access that, it's on there. And then, um, so is the moratorium as well. So if you go back, you go to the processes.
Not that one, sorry.
A short term, that's okay. There's an OHV moratorium on there as well.
Okay.
So that's just how we can access all of the current information. You can make direct comment. Um, so that we can get that information. If, if were desires for staff to put a public comment on a shared drive like we do submitted applications, we can add that on the website as well.
Okay.
All right. Anne, you wanna, um, so we saw the outline of the timer in here, but would you just remind us verbally?
Yes.
Please.
So today will be the first reading, um, on the 28th. We will be, um, putting the full, uh, ordinance, the whole text of it. We'll be publishing that to, this week, so it'll be into the paper on the 9th of March. Um, then we'll bring it for adoption before the board on the 21st of March. And its effective date, because it has to run for 30 days from the first day of publication until it can be effective on April 9th. Um, so that will be the effective date. We'll be taking public input and comment, um, in anticipation of that hearing on the 21st with the board to, for adoption. And so we welcome any kind of information from the public or any comment that we would receive. We are available. And we continue to have communication with, um, several of the outfitters who are working on their conditional use permits. And, um, we will be working on, you know, we have sent out a very, um, initial draft of the special use permit. And, um, we are hoping to have that special use permit, um, available before the, the moratorium. So we're working really hard to have that available, um, as a tool sooner than later. The other thing that, within the text of the outline of the process, you had brought up, Jeff, it'd be really good to make sure that the public knows that whereas the ordinance this time doesn't have any kind of GPS monitoring standard on it, that's something that we're going to continue to investigate and research. Um, Tim has offered to help us test devices if, if we need some field testing potentially, although we may, might be running out of time for him to be able to help us with that. And another piece that was, oh, the, the roadway use guide. So we are hoping to develop a very useful tool moving forward, very transparent, parent, flexible tool whereby we go in and we categorize county roads and make a road use guide that will be a really great tool moving forward to inform everyone. And so those not referenced in this iteration of the ordinance, um, the, um, well, at, at the end of the scope of work, we would be coming back with a final iteration of the ordinance that has been able to incorporate this scope of work during the moratorium period. And we've been able to vet and research the tools that we'd like to introduce into, into the final version.
Okay. There's some feedback in the chat, Anne, about revising the website so that it doesn't, um, appear that only outfitter and guides can comment on the public comment. Because not, as in the chat was stated, that not everyone wants to comment as an outfitter and guide, but perhaps just the general public. So if we can add that to this page, that'd be great.
Yeah, if you want to go back one, and just see what the tab says.
That's your again.
Did that for me, so I'll.
Outfitter and guide comment. So maybe you can just change that to
Public comment.
Public comment on OHV and outfitter and guide, including outfitter and guide or something like that.
And we could also outfitter guide and, um, and county roadway use or OHV use. We can, we can expand that.
Yeah, I also think it might be good, I went back to the comment made at the beginning, that to maybe try to explain, I know, like, just the ordinance and the special use permits is like technically a different process, but they do work together. So it might be good to add, like, a little bit about that, sir, because they are gonna interact.
Yes. Just ask, um, do you all have, would you like me to just bump up or put back into a new link that, that special use permit draft? It would be nice to just get that to the top here in the boxes again.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, also without getting, like, legally crosswise, but I think, again, just that they work together, like, sort of somehow having people be able to, I mean, not just us, but like, put it up on, on this. Because again, they're part of the same policy.
Sure, sure.
Even if they're legally different tools.
Just for clarification, you asking for, um, public comment on the SUP process during this as well? Because I think that might become confusing since we haven't had that out. That draft up there. I'm sorry, I was just asking for clarification as to, are you asking for, like, the public comment links to be for special use permit aspects to?
Oh.
Or, because since it's not out yet, I'd be concerned that we didn't do what you proposed.
I mean, yeah, yeah, and thought about, like, how to do differently. I mean, I guess probably need to be different links, but I think, I was thinking more like the narrative, like, 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 I like what's in here on the narrative. But just that narrative, like, again, really clearly explaining to people that haven't come to, like, every work session and read every document, like, how those two things are, are different, but how they're working together to get to an endpoint with a new overall, overall policy. Sorry, that didn't really answer your question.
No, that's, no, I just wanted for a clear, because I want to make sure staff understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's great. So, you know, whereas we, um, have kind of clarified future work about GPS and further work about the roadway use guide, we could also have, with the narrative itself, a little bit of discussion about the special use permit process. Absolutely.
And again, just in, like, plain English explaining to, well, me and other people, like, what, what the two things are achieving.
Yes.
And how they work together.
Absolutely.
And you've covered that in, like, the work sessions and town halls that we've had, but not everyone can come to everything.
Sure, no, happy to do that. And how, I will look, I mean, I think maybe one of the PowerPoint presentations might help, you know, be a good visual tool as well. So I'll look, look back at those PowerPoints, because I think one really kind of draws up the difference between zoning, like, conditional use permit and SUP specific to county roads and the difference between those. So that might be a, a good visual tool to have on there as well.
And again, I mean, one other suggestion, not to turn this thing into like a huge multi-page document, but it, it might just be good to have like a couple sentences referencing that in the county controls what the county controls, but there's a sort of parallel city process, and then there's a quick link to that. And again, all these things are, I think we're doing a pretty good job of having them talk to each other.
Right.
And work together.
We could absolutely link to the, the city's moratorium. I, I have the city's moratorium, so we could upload it as well.
Again, just so everyone, like, you know, whatever point in time they're paying attention, they, they understand all the pieces that are, that are moving.
That was kind of the intent of the narrative, so I don't think there's, you know, any reason we couldn't just augment it with both of those items and make sure and edit it with that, so.
Yeah.
Yes, sure.
Um, so as this is the presentation of the first draft, and it will be published in its entirety in the paper.
Yes.
Um, do we, uh, well, just, knowing that the city entertains a lot more of these than we do, and we don't read them into the.
No, you could, you just have to do the title and stuff for the first reading.
Great.
The whole.
Because it's, it's a lot, yeah, easier for someone to digest that.
The only thing I would add, I think, and I think we have, but just, I will, um, follow with Chris and you know, or just look at it one more time. The, the last thing, just, just to make sure before we publish on, I, I publish it on Thursday, yeah.
Yep, great, okay. Um, so I don't know that we have to make formal actions to acknowledge the reading, do we? Or, I mean, we are just.
No, it is just for the, the first reading, the first discussion of it, and I'll read into the record, and then for perhaps the directive of the staff to proceed as described in order to address this board.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I'll try to keep it simple, and I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge the presentation of the county ordinance 23-01, an ordinance addressing multipurpose use on county roads for, um, the beginning of our process for considering the ordinance. Um, sorry. And directing staff to proceed to, um, publishing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
None for me?
Nothing for me either. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Do we read this into the record?
No.
Or just?
Just the title, and it'll be, it'll be published in its entirety in the paper.
Sounds good. I'm going to stop sharing then. Okay. Yep, no problem.
All right, moving on, uh, number two on our agenda, we have the water lease with Mount Massive Golf Course. Our annual lease for 2023, uh, with Betsy Kellmeyer here with the Mount Massive Golf Course Board. Um, this is really just a, um, legal has reviewed last year's lease agreement and made some amendments. But it really.
It was just, pretty much updated and then just changed the reference from Mount Massive to Mount Massive Golf, the acronym, Mount Massive Golf, just to be clear, but otherwise there aren't going to be any substantive changes.
Nothing substantive, no, I, yep. Um, yes, so this is our same agreement from 2022. Any questions or concerns from the board, Betsy?
Our board?
Yep.
We did already last week submit our 14 to our engineer, who will now be getting sent into the state, which hadn't been done by today.
Yep.
We wanted to give her some time, you know, because of her schedule, to get it done, so we already asked her to do that.
And that's great. That's, I just, it was just, I knew that this deadline was coming, and Tim pulled the board on offering you the same lease, which we were in agreement on. I just figured for, like, kind of hitting the technical deadlines, I'd throw it on this agenda.
So now that's submitted, we said, no changes. Even though we have them looking.
Good.
You can say that, but I would like whoever is, I don't know if you're going to keep continuing working with the county. Probably, I'd screen, I mean, sooner or later.
Sure. Okay, yeah. I'll look for an invitation.
Okay. Okay. I will make.
Well, thank you guys.
Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you.
I will make a motion that we approve the water lease with Mount Massive Golf Course in the amount of $12,730.
Oh, second.
Okay, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
None for me?
I just wanted to state for the record, it, it is the same as last year. It, it, um, essentially frees up some of our, um, available water for utilizing the augmentation plan, once you get that up and running. And it also offers to the golf course board, um, the use of anything left over in that, um, bucket of water should that not be used, uh, through the augmentation plan. So a few different options for golf course. And Betsy, do you recall just how much of the, you know, was all of last year's use from the dairy free?
Yes, there was, I think there was a half a day or a day or maybe two days that it wasn't in priority, but then I was told, no, it was in priority the whole time. So everything we used last year was dairy free, because it was in priority.
That's great. Cool. That's awesome, that's, I mean, well.
That's why I think somebody asked, well, can we get our money back? Because we paid for all this money for the augmentation, but I understand that you have to do it ahead of time, and you have to commit ahead of time, and it's just, you can't wait to see how wet the year is this year, unfortunately, yeah, um, both planning and cost, so, yeah. So I, I kind of told my board that it's just the way it is. We've got to kind of commit ahead of time. So we know it's kind of, it is there.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you relaying that. And I also hope that, like, that extra 10 acre feet, you know, whatever is left over essentially, that's not leased through the augmentation plan is available, and our agreement is, I know, extra cost on that, because that's kind of up in the air too, what that, what that looks like. Um, and I will just mention, we do need to circle back and rectify our permit to get a proper well permit for the clubhouse. Okay. Um. No further discussion, sorry. Any further, that's for anything else from my fellow commissioners, all right. Uh, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
And moving on to number three. Um, we have a consideration of professional services agreement for medical officer for Lake County called the Health Agency, and we have Colleen Nielsen, our director of Lake County.
I have to go, I just had to cut, um, click onto this.
Okay. Go ahead. No, I, I don't think she was talking to us.
Okay. All right, Colleen, do you want to, um, start this conversation? I don't, do we have, I'm sorry, do we have any supporting documentation on this?
You do not, no.
All right, go ahead, Colleen.
Yeah, no worries. And so at this point in time, we don't have anyone, um, new in a medical officer position. I had what I thought was a strong candidate. Feel timing-wise, I feel a little rushed in the sense of trying to accomplish this, because there were some hiccups, um, as far as trying to figure out some insurance pieces, as well as what a professional contract will look like. I feel like between Chris and I and Tim, that we are getting on the same page of what is needed and what has to happen next. And I think there's opportunity for more conversation for me to follow up with Chris, to make sure that she's, has all the pieces that would have to be in there. And then also opportunities for different ways that the contract is written to satisfy either, you know, and/or the county. So satisfying the county, meaning sure the county's protected, as well as, um, a medical officer coming in. So at this point in time, I think there's, um, I will follow up with Tim on Thursday to talk about some next steps and some ideas that I have. I've also been in touch with Lisa, who, as you can imagine, is fully confident in staying in this role until we do find someone. She's also interested in remaining as our medical officer with. She's also interested in remaining as our medical officer with, um, some other pieces added in. I'll also have that conversation with Tim on Thursday, as I have a meeting set up with her on Monday to kind of follow up with her and to see if we can find a good balance between, um, what would work best for the county and the community. So that is where I am at. I think some of my lessons learned is timing and not understanding kind of what was needed in the grand scheme as far as from the provider and or from the county. And I think the other piece too, I think there is also, as you know how I roll, silver lining in the sense of the person that I had been working with since, um, December, just recognizing their availability, cause that also played a role in the sense of not hearing back some of the questions that I had and some of the asks that I had. And, um, and I think it just brought to light to me that that's probably not a great fit for our county. If I can't access them, that kind of defeats the purpose of having a medical officer. And so I think, to me, that's a silver lining. I appreciate Chris and Tim having the patience as we continue to navigate that. But as you can imagine, it's business as usual, you know, with Lisa, until, um, we have the ability to bring someone in and or come to an agreement with Lisa of some of, um, things that she might want to, um, do in the future.
So Colleen, you have the draft of the, um, services agreement that I prepared with the sample, uh, scope of services that was drawn from the previous MOU that for some reason had been used for this. Um, do you mind sharing that? I want to share that with Dr. Lisa so that we can kind of like expedite her review of that and comment back to any comments, questions, concerns she has with that, that PSA. So we don't have another big lag time of, you know, waiting to get this.
No, I fully agree. And I think, um, you know, just having a preliminary conversation with her, you know, in the last couple of days, that, that she, you know, obviously it's Lisa. She's very comfortable. She understands how those things operate. Um, I think the piece that is missing, and I'll send this to you, Chris, is that because of the nuance of having family planning, we have a medical officer that oversees the, you know, the county as a whole or public health, not the county, public health specifically as a whole. And, um, for family planning, it just is a little bit more additional, as you can imagine, with some of the services that are, um, here. So I will send that to you, cause I, I know I sent both of them, but I recognized that, hey, that, there wasn't a grab there. And, um, and I think that's an easy thing. And it's just, uh, a way to marry some of those, be like, oh, I think that's captured here. And so hopefully, you know, if there's opportunity set up for time, I will send that to you and or opportunity set up a time to say, hey, let's walk through this. And, um, like I said, I'm more than happy to present that to Lisa. But like I said, I'd like to have a conversation with Tim first with some of the asks.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And a big thank you to Dr. Lisa, um, for, you know, maintaining that position until we can, can figure out what our, what our next steps are.
Yeah. Do, one thought question on that, Colleen. Do we, I couldn't find a current MOU. There was one recorded, uh, I think two thousand and nineteen or something with Dr. Petrie.
So basically that is the last MOU and then we make updates to say no changes and parties in agreement. And so obviously we recognize that, you know, that's not, uh, the way it is, um, needed to be done. And so that's that opportunity that we have now.
So here's, here's the problem though, is that that, I, I didn't find anything reported, either extending that or changing the provide, because it was an MOU with just Dr. Petrie. It wasn't with the clinic or anything like that.
Oh, no, I did have one with Lisa's name. Let me find that one for you.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I don't.
All right. I thought it was, I thought she was back on with us for Lisa for twenty nineteen, only because, uh, for some folks who had that history, Dr. Petrie came in for one year and then we, um, rolled back to Dr. Lisa, but I will find that and send that to you.
Yeah, that, that, if, if you have.
I do, yes. Cause then we, then we've since updated with like a little like, hey, no changes. Um, and, and as we talked about, you know, having someone in place for twenty years, uh, and even the transition between, um, Petrie, like I said, it's, as, as you are well aware, we don't get the best like direction from the state, like do it how it works for you and not like this is how it has to be done, um, kind of. So we'll get there. I'll send that to you right now.
As what Colleen was alluding to too, is that memorandum of understanding from her perspective is not an appropriate way to engage professional services on behalf of the county. So trying to move away from that approach, um, to a professional service agreement. And, uh, Tim and I reached out to our colleagues in other counties and stuff, and they all seem to use a professional services agreement for these, this type of an engagement. So, um, I think that's just, again, progressing us a little bit better, um, process.
Always moving forward and learning. So yes, I was, big learning for me. So I apologize for any, you know, headaches that it might cause as we continue to navigate this.
No worries. No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Colleen.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Um, all right. Moving on to item number four, consideration of renewal and extension of our contract with Everbridge. Does Claire is here, but she isn't at here.
Yeah, she's at the training. Um, so Claire's done, so the, uh, one-year agreement that we did have with Everbridge, if it's done on a year-to-year basis, year-to-year basis, they increase it by five percent. So Claire asked for a three-year, um, extension. That's, the, the first year will come at, um, twenty twenty-two price, I believe, and then three percent increases after that. Uh, the only thing that we're waiting on from Everbridge, we still have time from Everbridge. The only thing we're waiting on for them is a section in their longer contract that, um, you know, it's approved with, uh, annual appropriations.
Yeah, cause they're asking, since it is a multi-year, we need to have that provision in there. And, and what they sent over for review doesn't have that in there yet. So this would be one that I would recommend if you're ready for it to be approved, to just approve any final legal review so we can get those details worked out.
Great. Right. That all makes sense. Um, great. And this is also, uh, I mean, this is, I, this is a bit of a rhetorical question, but this is, this is not, uh, conflicting with any of the conversations with communications groups or other service providers and emergency, uh, responders. Cause everybody will continue to access and leverage this platform. Great. All right. Um.
And then this contract will eventually go to the E nine-one-one board. So, and, and they're stood up, the, the three years, they want to change them.
They can do that.
They.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
I'm actually a little engaged.
I'll, I'll consider approving, uh, the contract, uh, extension with Everbridge for a three-year contract pending legal review, final legal review.
So moved.
Okay. Second.
Right. Any further discussion?
None for me. Thank you.
None for me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And we just go.
I can, yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve those for ending, uh, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
One second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
None.
There are none. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And that concludes our special meeting this morning. Um, we will reconvene for our one o'clock work session.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kathy, the work set, the SNAP work session is at one.
So you can have lunch.
Yeah. Kathy and Paul, our work session will convene at one PM for SNAP benefits.
At the same length.
Same length.
Got it. Thank you.
Through the same length.
Thank you.